To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. Also, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, our principals, assistant principals, teachers, employees, whoever, parents. Appreciate y'all coming out. We've got a pretty good crowd tonight, so let's... Everybody, appreciate you being here. John, you want to take care of recognitions?
Yes, sir, I will. If you will pass that resolution, Mr. Chairman, we will get started. We have some pretty great folks recognized.
Motion to approve the HCS Stronger Together recognitions resolution.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, second, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as you know, at the beginning of the year, our stakeholders voted HCS Stronger Together is our new hashtag, and this... These folks that are getting the award tonight really embody that, and I think you'll see that as we introduce them. So if we can have Ms. Brylee Bronner, Ms. Emily Bryant, and Ms. Maggie Hayden to come forward, and Coach Kapinski, are you here? I know she was trying to get here, and Ms. Coach Christina Covington-Jones is three days removed from having a baby, so we understand why she's not here. So, let me tell you a little bit about these young ladies. On their way to a basketball event in Bowling Green on a very warm day in mid-June, the Central Harden Lady Bruins found themselves stuck in a traffic jam on I-65. These young ladies, Brylee, Emily, and Maggie, sprang into action. Along with Coach Christina Covington-Jones and Christina Kapinski, the Lady Bruins started handing out their own bottles of Gatorade and own bottles of water to motorists that were also trapped in that same traffic jam. Starting with cars, with children, and elderly riders, they gave out their full supply to riders and drivers all around them. A driver from Atlanta took a picture of this act of kindness and posted it on Twitter. It received 336 likes and was retweeted nearly 100 times. Ladies, we are so proud of you for your selfless efforts. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. (APPLAUSE). Ms. Hallworth, if you'll stand up for a picture with these ladies. Thank you all. Very proud of you guys. Very, very proud. (APPLAUSE). Mr. Chairman, we know that the parents are here. If your parents, could you stand up? You've done a great job of raising these young ladies. Stand up and be recognized too for your...[179.12][179.12](APPLAUSE).
I think we've got some grandparents out there, too.
Oh, some grandparents, too. So thank you for your influence, grandparents. Mr. Jim Wimp, if you'll come forward. This is Mr. Jim Wimp. As you all probably know, hundreds of our students, thanks to him and other children from Harden and surrounding counties, learn the importance of teamwork and fair play in various athletic programs that Jim offers each year. Jim is a consummate professional who has nothing but the best interest of all of his players at heart. It would be fair to say that his league commitments and our own board commitments that Ms. Johnson just read align perfectly. Jim truly puts kids first. He is kind, caring, compassionate, and dedicated to providing an inviting and fun environment where kids thrive in a competitive and balanced atmosphere. Parents don't have to ask if their children want to participate each year. They remind their parents each year to be sure and sign them up for the league that Jim is so dedicated to. Jim has given sacrificially of his time for 35-plus years to ensure that children in our area have an opportunity to participate in fair play, earn confidence, and grow in every way. He does this all, and he does all this, and even manages to find a drive school bus for Harden County schools. So, we appreciate you and appreciate what you do for our children. Thank you so much.[259.14][259.14](APPLAUSE). So, again, I thank you for all tonight, the embodiment of Stronger Together. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sutton, you got anything you'd like to speak to us tonight? Tell us some good news?
Everybody staying tonight. That's great. We're about creating opportunities for our kids, and we are kind of in a second part to a two-part series on recognizing students who've been a part of the Governor's Scholar Program, some other opportunities outside of school. Basically, last time you know, we recognize students who were at the Governor's Scholar Program. And the first person I want to call up tonight is Ms. Bethany Trotta from North Harden High School to speak to you. She went to Governor's Scholar for the Arts, which is a specific Governor's Scholar Program, so I'm going to let her come up and speak with you all and say a few words.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Bethany Trotta. I'm a senior at North Harden High School this year. At GSA, my art form was instrumental music, and I played the oboe. So that's what I studied while I was there. Some activities I do while I'm at North Harden is I'm a drum major at North Harden High School. I also am in their one symphony. I'm a member of the Beta Club, and also the president of Student Council. The application process for GSA for instrumental music was two rounds. The first round was digital. We had to send in a video recording of two contrasting pieces, scales, in response to a question such as, "What was the most memorable experience of your life?" And then the second round is a live audition. When I personally went, I was performed... I performed in front of two people. I play again two contrasting pieces. I sight read twice, and then they ask you a few questions afterwards, like, "Why do you want to do GSA?" When I went to GSA, I was at the Center College. I stayed in their dorm, and most people had one roommate. Well, thankfully for me, I had three roommates, and it was a lot of fun. And each roommate has a different art form. So the art forms I stayed was... My roommates were dance, drama, and visual art. The RA team I had consisted of nine people, and our leader was Andy. And while I studied there, I studied music theory, music history, improv, ways to pursue music as a future career, and how it adjusts to becoming a better musician overall. My plans for college is to go to university to major in psychology with a minor in music. And GSA helps me learn how to write a resume. I am able to get scholarships, and also really helps me with my social skills and being able to talk to people, and it's definitely something I can be proud of and be able to put on a college resume today. Thank you.[430.77][430.77](APPLAUSE).
She's come all the way up through Harden County schools, all the way through Vine Grove and J.T.A. and North Harden High School. Very proud of her. This next young man we're going to bring up here is pretty amazing. I don't think you had a summer as far as any break from what I could tell. This guy not only attended the Governor's Scholar Program, he was part of the Kentucky Boy State Program, and also went to a Naval Academy Summer Seminar. So he's a... He kind of originally looked at the Governor's Scholar for Entrepreneurship. So he's a forward thinker, and obviously, he's a doer, he's a runner, like we would call, and he's a... I want to hear about his experience this summer in those three programs.
Well, just so I formally introduce myself, my name is Jackson Flanagan. I'm a senior at Central Harden High School. My summer was very hectic. Started off, first week after school let out, I went to Boy State for a week, and that was probably the best experience... Not the best, because they were all the best. But it was a great experience. You got to go and learn about Kentucky politics. I got to meet the Secretary of State Allison Grimes. It was an amazing experience. You learned about how to be a leader and how to collaborate with others, and how to create bills and to see those through. On a, of course, a mock level. Next, I went to the Naval Academy Summer Seminar, and I hope to pursue... I plan to pursue a career in naval service and plan to fly in the Navy. So while I was at the Naval Academy, I experienced life as a midshipman, and while I was there, it was very difficult. When you go to a place like the Naval Academy, you realize what kind of person that you are, how you deal with stresses, how you deal with other people, how you deal with people screaming at your face, telling you to get down on your face and do push-ups. That's something that you don't get every day here at school.[546.16][546.16](LAUGHTER). So, you know, that was definitely...[549.16][549.16](LAUGHTER). That was definitely quite a change. But that's what I want to do, and that's what I'm working so hard for. And lastly, but not least, I went to the Governor's Scholar Program. It's five weeks long. It was a long five weeks, and I loved every bit of that five weeks. I learned so much from GSP and so many different types of people there, too. You know, you go to Governor's Scholar Program, you're going to meet people of all kinds of ethnic backgrounds and, you know, religious backgrounds, and I won't... Like, I will say that what I learned at GSP, I can't learn at school. You know, it's a collaborative learning, and I think GSP gave me an insight for what type of person I want to be when I grow up, and it was an awesome experience. I mean, I would go back in a heartbeat if I could. So that was my summer. Thank you.[616.16][616.16](APPLAUSE).
I know something that Ms. Morgan has encouraged us to do is to use some of these kids who have attended the Governor's Scholar Program to mentor some of the kids going through the application process this year, so they understand the opportunities that are in front of them and not to give up on their goal. So we started even working on those discussions today. We'll let you know how that goes. I apologize, we had to show a video. If you all remember last year, Nakaya Talafaro from John Harden High School, our friends at Dow Chemical actually sponsored about a $3,000 trip to Georgia Tech University for the National Youth Leadership Forum for Engineering and Technology. She found out about, I'm going to say, a week or so before she went to that, that she was going to have to move to Hawaii. And she actually contacted me and kept contacting me and said, "I want to give a little video to talk about my experience." And I said, "We'd love to have you there," because our plan was to have her come and speak to the board anyway. So I'm going to have you all kind of turn around here, and it's a minute forty-nine seconds. She did this herself. It's not a professional video, but she wanted to show her appreciation to our community for her opportunity, and she's going to be a shining star wherever she ends up, hopefully back here in Harden County.
Hi, my name's Nakaya Talafaro, and recently, from July 21st, July 28th, which is seven days, I went to the Envision Experience Engineering Program at Georgia Tech. Each day, we did different activities that involved different engineering skills, like coding helicopters to fly by computer, stripping wires, and using problem-solving skills to build water towers for communities without water. Speakers also came to talk about their engineering fields and their experience in the job. The engineering program allowed students to see whether they wanted to go in the field and showed what it takes to be an engineer. Overall, the engineering program was a lot of work, but totally worth it. I would 100% go again.
(INAUDIBLE).
(INAUDIBLE).
She made the video and tried to send it by way of email. It was too big to go through, so the tech department encouraged me to have a video. She followed the instructions and got it to us. So we're seeing some of the best education we're giving kids as the opportunities we're getting in connection with our classrooms, and these are just three examples of kids that are going to do great things at the Harden County School. So thank you all for allowing me to share with you.
Thank you. Three more future leaders. We need them all. Good job. Okay, recognition of visitors. Anybody sign your... John?
Introduce yourself if you do have to.
I will, I will.
Is that last name Scott?
Well, my name is Scott Sinseal. You already know my daughter Lucy. And Ms. Morgan's already taken the time to steer me in the right direction, but I'll never pass up a chance to get up at a podium. I grew up, you know, in a family educator. My dad teaches. I've been a college professor, and what I do now is I handle the Army's largest, the largest scholarship program in the U.S., about 16,000 a year. And what that's allowed me to do is to do several hundred scholarship interviews. My own daughter's a National Merit Scholarship winner down at Baylor, graduates this year, speaks six languages, and you've met Lucy here. And so we're getting ready to take our fall trip last week of September, first week of October, and we're heading up to the East Coast, going to go visit Georgetown, Princeton, Yale, you know, all the good schools. But as I go through and scour her stuff, one thing pops up. There's one huge red flag, and that's something that you, as a group, can take care of. And again, I'll follow up as Ms. Morgan has directed. But that's how we do our class rankings here in Harden County. Lucy is a great student. Seventy percent of her classes are AP, pre-AP, or honors. She's a 3.92 GPA, three high schools in four years, four schools in the last five years. She's skipped entire classes of math because of the curriculum imposed by what I do, yet she's still pulled a B in an AP Calculus class. Sitting on a 35 for an ACT, 1470 on the SAT, wants to retake it to get it higher. We're actually going to take it on spring break. But the problem is, when she goes to fill out her applications, she won't register as one of the top 10 members or 10% of her class. She's not even in the top 20 students. It's because we don't weigh the merit or the rigor that people put into their classes. So as a parent and somebody who reviews files, I have to go home and I can have one of two discussions with my daughter. Number one, hey, you should have just taken an easier load. That would have done it for you. Or I could probably give her the same speech that anyone that here would give her. It's all going to pay off in the long run. But the bottom line here is, we haven't imposed an artificial flag on a young lady who has more than deserved it. You know, we talked about with that young gentleman just sitting up here at the Naval Academy and these other things. Lucy's calendar this summer was just as similar. Girl state, she was a Kentucky Governor Scholar. She's also an Alabama State Scholar. She's a South Carolina State Scholar. She also spent the summer at the International Beta Competition, placed in sixth internationally. Lucy is a World Robotics competitor, a U.S. Open competitor, was one of only two Kentucky students to finish on the stage at DECA. She has won a state championship in speaking. She speaks three languages, and she won't finish in the top 10% of her class. If you don't think that that's wrong, then we're not standing for something here. So, Ms. Morgan, I'll take your advice. Thank you for your time, and I know it's not just me, but there's other kids out there that'll be tested by the same theory, but not all classes are equal. We know that. So hopefully you'll consider that. Who?
Yes.[984.12][984.12](APPLAUSE).
Okay, construction updates, and I think Rob is here to... He brought us ten or twelve trees today that have been transferred into drawings, and going to tell us more about it.
I will, and we do participate in a tree planting program at the office for all the trees that we sacrifice for the good that we do. And I did elect tonight not to log the... Literally, log the drawings back in. But I do have a few things to report onto the board tonight, just sort of recapping the earlier meeting today. A number of projects are on your agenda tonight for some action. The first... The two biggest, of course, are or is the approval of the design development package for both the new Lincoln Trail Elementary and the new East Harden Middle School. And as I described earlier, design development is sort of the midway step that KD asked us to submit documentation on. That is to say, we're... In terms of the design process, we're about halfway there. And as I said earlier today, that's actually good news. That puts us still on track to complete the drawings. I believe your board meeting is December 20th, and so at that board meeting, we'll be coming to you with a complete set of construction documents, ready to wrap up the design effort soon thereafter, bid the project, and get construction underway early next year. So I do ask for the board's approval on that tonight. Couple of other items as well, in no particular order. I believe it was at the last board meeting, the board approved the construction documents for the new batting facility at North Harden High School. We did submit that to KDE, and they have also asked for us to submit a BG-2 and BG-3 for the project. So you'll find those two documents on your... In your board packet tonight as well, so that we can satisfy KDE's request. And then last but not least, you'll see what is listed as change order number four for the John Harden High School minor sports facilities. That is our last change order resulting in a credit for the board. To paraphrase it, those are the materials as direct purchases that the board did not spend, so that money is unspent coming back to the board, the reason for the change. Beyond that, that's my summary for tonight. As I said, we can... We'll plan a work session with Mr. Stith and Mr. Stucker, brew some coffee, and start going through the drawings sheet by sheet in the next couple of months, because they are rather thorough at this point. We actually have been meeting regularly with our steering committee on the two projects, making very good progress. We actually have our next steering committee meeting on Monday, so that's coming up for both projects as well. And so, again, progress is good. Our CM has done their first round of estimating. Estimates are good, so the project is well-positioned at this point, both projects. Are there any questions?
So what about the indoor hitting facility at North Harden? What's scheduled maybe for completion on that?
We are... I have given the plan reviewer at KDE absolutely... In fact, I've already given him the unapproved draft model of BG-3, hoping that they will bless that for bidding as soon as we can. Both Mr. Stith and I have been in contact with them to kind of get that moved along as best we can. My perspective is that they treat small projects about the same way as they treat large projects. There's a process that we have to go through, and it really doesn't matter what the scale is or what the schedule is. They tend to treat them equally, and so we actually got a schematic design review letter faster on Lincoln Trail and East than we did on the batting facility. But again, we're kind of stuck to check the boxes off as they list them to us and present information as they ask for it, and so we're hoping to get that blessing very, very soon.
So that could be a winter project for our contractor, right?
It could be. It could be. We would... Since it's so small, we can bid it rather quickly, and we still would like to get, you know, start our earthwork foundation design or foundation work in October, November, before any harsh weather hits. It's 90 degrees today, and it's September, so it may be a mild winter. Who knows? We'll find out.
Willy worms are brown.
They are.
Mild weather.
Mild.
No snow.
No. But yes, we are pushing that pretty hard to get that.
I don't have anything else. Let me get questions, see if you need Rob to answer. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Now, if it really turns out a mild winter, y'all be wanting my autograph next year, okay?
Oh, yeah, right.
On a check.
We better move on. Okay, consideration of the consent agenda. I guess as far as construction updates, we did have a noon meeting, which we talked about some things. So we're still working on clearing up the project at Sasey Valley. There's some things that not... We don't feel like met the specifications properly, and so we are still working on it. So the people at Sasey or wherever, we want the school to look perfect when it's done, and I think there's some grass and seeding and some stuff going on now on the outside, but there's some inside issues that we're still addressing, so we'll stay on top of that. Okay, consideration of the consent agenda. And anyone got any questions or anything they want?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions about any of the items, but we always have PAC information on here, and I have to tell you all, if you haven't been over there to see Mamma Mia, you have really missed something. I went last Saturday night, and it was great.
Good.
It was great.
We'll be there Sunday afternoon.
Will you?
Yes.
Well, be prepared to dance.[1423.41][1423.41](LAUGHTER). There's a lot of dancing in the aisles going on.
You got your boot off just in time.
I sure did. I sure did. But it was really, really... One of the best things I've ever seen over there.
Okay, we've got a few things on here. We're approving a district calendar committee tonight. There'll be a principal, district office member, board member, two parents, elementary teacher, and a middle high school teacher, and two classified employees, and two community members. They usually work on this each year and come up with a calendar for...
Yes, Mr. Brian Lewis is leading that charge.
Brian's leading the charge on that, so that's in the process, and we're approving some trips for North Harden, John Harden, and some students to go...
I really think it ought to be mandatory that a board member go on these high schools.
Yeah, I think so.
I do.
Have someone to suggest?
Yes, I do.[1495.12][1495.12](LAUGHTER).
We are... We are approving the development design documents for East Harden, Middle, and the new Lincoln Trail Elementary projects here tonight, the change order that Rob talked about at John Harden, which is a credit, and I am more than glad to accept all of those change orders we can get in the North Harden hit and facility. We're approving the fiscal year '19 working budget. Be about the same as always, is all we can say about that. So, being said, if there's no other discussion on those, or we need a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on it. All in favor, second, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action items? We were okay on that. We didn't have any special action items tonight. New business? Anyone have any new business? Superintendent's report?
Really just want to... And I'm glad Ms. Bronner is here, as well as Mr. Sutton, but our instructional services department has really been working diligently with all of our schools, and I have met with each principal at our schools and asking them the great things that are happening, and they are all have been very complimentary of the work Mr. Sutton did last year with all the schools and his entire department, but also the beginning of this school year, attending PLCs throughout the schools. So I know at the board meeting, sometimes we don't spend a great deal of time on academics, but just want to thank him and his department for all the work that is happening. Just the students that you have up here tonight, just know we have those students at our elementary school, at our middle schools, and the high schools. Those high school students represent us well when they go to these camps and things, but it takes a lot of hard work. So I know I share with the principals out there and appreciate what they have been doing going to the schools. I do... One of the secretaries...
Action items. We were okay on that. We didn't have any special action items tonight. New business? Anyone have any new business? Superintendent's report.
Really just wanna, and I'm glad Ms. Bronner is here as well as Mr. Sutton, but our instructional services department has really been working diligently with all of our schools. And I have met with each principal at our schools and asking them the great things that are happening. And they are all, have been very complimentary of the work Mr. Sutton did last year with all the schools and his entire department, but also the beginning of this school year, attending PLCs throughout the schools. So, I know at the board meeting, sometimes we don't spend a great deal of time on academics, but I just want to thank him and his department for all the work that is happening. Just the students that you have up here tonight, just know we have those students at our elementary school, at our middle schools, and the high schools. Those high school students represent us well when they go to these camps and things. But it takes a lot of hard work. So I know I share with the principals out there and appreciate what they have been doing, going to the schools. I do, one of the secretaries did say it'd be nice if some of them stayed in the office, some to answer questions, but they are, I tell them they can come back in here at 4:00 after all the schools have dismissed, and that's pretty much the calendar they've been keeping. So, we greatly appreciate that. So, thank you all.
All right. Executive session. I don't think we need a executive session. October the 1st through the 5th, school dismissed for fall break. And October the 8th, it's out again for Staff Professional Learning Day. And October the 18th, we'll have another board meeting. Maybe one in between now.
So much fun.
Appreciate y'all coming out. That little girl down there in the bluegrass glasses, she's an altar girl down at the church. And I can get dimples by winking at her in church up there. Nice kids. We need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, second, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Thirty-three, thirty-three minutes. You've done good.
Motion carries.